And we'll start by saying the pledge. I'll lead. Are you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have, uh, I'll see, may I, we can do the higher grant stuff?
Yep. Before that, we have two celebrations for the district. Uh, we'll phase these in throughout the night. Um, our first one is to Mr. Crosdale for receiving fifty hours of board development training for the Arkansas School Boards Association.
I still have one.
We'll circle back on that one for a moment. Do you want to call us school board appreciation month and see some things in the packet for you? Dinner was good, but more so understanding that we truly do appreciate your service. I was thinking about that the other day, like you guys took off work Friday, spent five or six hours up here going through scenarios. That's above and beyond, but it's not that. It's every month, it's every packet, it's every text message I have to send you, it's every trip that you guys have to take on behalf of the school. So, we appreciate it. I know our kids, I had a kid today say, are you the school intended?
Yes, I am.
She asked me what I did, and I said, well, you know, I work with principals, I work with school boards. He said, oh, what's school board? I said, well, they're people who are elected to help run in sports schools. And he's like, what do they do? A lot of stuff with money and a lot of important decisions, but we've got seven great members here. It's phenomenal to have opportunity, um, to be in this position this year and just thank you. I appreciate those of you, you've done it for one or two years, some of you have done it for twelve, thirteen years, close to ten years. That's a lot of Monday nights, a lot of Monday night football. We appreciate it. We, we really, we are really thankful to have the opportunity here and grab it because you guys all do such a great job. You have such level heads in your thinking and you're always doing things to support kids. With that, I'm gonna bring up Ms. Smithers, she's gonna talk about one of those investments you've made in our kids, which is our share of the hired grant, where she does all kinds of career internships and trips with our high school students.
Excuse me? So, I'll just start. Just gonna start here. And if you guys will pass around. I just made, um, really just a very broad summary of some of the things that, that we're doing with the college and career program. Um, you know, I know you guys have a huge packet and you don't have to look at it now, just maybe something you'll look at later. Um, but I want to thank you guys for having me to come and speak about, um, this is something I'm very passionate about. I could talk about this for hours, I won't, but I could. Um, and I really, I think when Mr. Grabett asked me, he said, you know, that he'd like for me to come and talk about some, I think he said personal, what did you say? Personal success.
Success stories, what we've seen with our kids.
Right, personal success stories. Um, and so from my perspective, the success that we've seen and the growth we've seen in this program really is a team effort. Um, I, I'm not gonna stand up here and say, I did this and I did that, because it really is a team effort between the counselors at the high school, um, Ms. Mormon, our registrar, Ms. Mitchell, you guys, it's really a team effort because we, we have the ability to give the students or to offer the students these opportunities. Um, and so when I go to Ms. Mitchell and I say, hey, I have this opportunity to take students to learn about cybersecurity, am I, are you okay with that? Can I, can I, you know, re- request a bus or an S U D or whatever? Um, and she's, you know, always, yes, we want them to have this opportunity. So I really feel like the overall success of the program is a team effort, it's not me, okay? Um, but some of the things that, that we do when we're talking, when I'm talking about the program, when I first started, this is my third year in this role, and my first year, I almost had to kidnap children to get them to go on a trip. I mean, we would send something out and, you know, it's like, who's interested in going to tour the U, the U of A? Crickets. You know, then we would start going through, because we do a survey or I do a survey at the beginning of the year, kind of, what are, where are your plans? Are you going to college, you know, what are you doing? So then Ms. Hawkins and I would pour over the list and try to get, you know, enough kids to go. Now, in the third year, we send out a survey, you know, we announce it, say, hey, check your emails, we send out a survey, and we have to turn the survey off probably thirty minutes after we send it out because there are so many kids signing up. And we, most of the things we do, we have limited slots that we can take students. So we always say it's first come, first served, and, you know, for sure within an hour, we've had to, to cut it off and start a waitlist and, you know, because a lot of times we send home permission slips, but students don't return them, so we have some slots that come open, you know, later. Um, so the students are buying in to these opportunities, and that's something that's really important. They, they really are, you know, when we offer things that are in the areas they're interested in, they're, they're buying in and they're wanting to go on those trips and learn more. Also, we have speakers come in during our enrichment time, um, throughout the, throughout the year, and it can be colleges, universities. We have, um, industry partners that come, that we've come in, that come in, and students have an opportunity to sign up for those during R T I. That's another situation where, you know, the first time we would go through and we'd say, who didn't sign up for anything for R T I? You're in this session, and you're in this session, and you're in this session, because no one would sign up. You know, they would all go to the, to the study halls and the things like that. And now, when we do send stuff out, when we send those opportunities or we list them in the R T I scheduler, we have students that sign up, that come in, they participate, they engage with the person, they're not just sitting there bored or whatever. They're there because they want to be there, they're there because they want to learn. So those are some things that we're doing, um, you know, with regarding that. But another area that has really grown for me personally is our internships. Um, my first, well, my first year I didn't do anything with internships, and then I got my accredited, or my credentials to be able to supervise. Last year, I started with three, and then it went to five, and I'm at eighteen now, students that are participating. And some of them are in, you know, they're, they're in jobs that, that really I didn't have anything to do with them getting it. They were already working and they just wanted to have additional hours. But, I mean, I've placed, I personally have placed students at O C H, um, in roles, um, that are directly related to medical professions that they're interested in. They are, O C H is a wonderful partner, um, they let our students come in, they try to place them in whatever area that they're interested in, and they're, so they're getting firsthand on the job experience in a career field that they want. Um, I've placed several students that had opportunities to have full-time jobs once they graduated, um, with, you know, with these, um, business partners. I have a student that's, um, doing an apprenticeship with a plumber. Um, I'm not sure where he's going with it, but I know, um, that this, the plumber that I have him with, um, he is willing to pay for all of the schooling that's required that they have to do for the plumbing, if they're willing to stay with him and work with him, he's willing to pay, you know, for their education part. Uh, and he's open, I think if I send in fifty people, he would take fifty people. Um, so, you know, another really great partnership that we have. I've had several students that have done internships, um, with Legacy Bank and have, you know, after graduation, they're working full-time there now. So there's a lot of, of growth in those areas, and students are coming to me, like I said, I mean, I have eighteen now, um, where they're coming in, hey, I want to be part of the work program. If you're not aware, uh, the work program is not just students checking out and going to work. We have things that we do with them. We create resumes, we, um, we go through interview processes, like we do these things so that they are prepared once, not just when they graduate, you know, that they can go out into the workforce and, and have the tools and the skills they need to be successful. Um, any questions so far?
How, how are you getting these internship opportunities? Are those things that you're just sourcing, or is there, is there resources for you to go?
I just reach out. Um, you know, if I have a student who comes in and they're interested in a certain field or whatever, um, I, I just, you know, with O C H, you know, specifically, I just email them and just say, hey, I've got students that are interested in doing this, is there any way we could get an internship? And once we got students in the door, um, the first year, then after that, you know, I just email Mr. Berry and say, hey, I have three students, can you place them? This one's interested in doing this, this one's interested in doing this, and he does his best to, you know, and of course, you know, keep in mind, he is somewhat committed with like patient interaction. If they don't actually have training as C N As or something like that, he puts them with C N As and he lets them do limited things that they can do within legalities and things like that. Um, I mean, I had a student last year that he placed in the lab, and they were training this student to be a phlebotomist. Um, so, and, and if the student had, the student was college-bound, but had that student wanted at the end of school, they would have been able to go to work in the lab. So, um, so that's primarily, I just reach out to whatever industry they're looking for. Um, let's see, I didn't bring my glasses, so I'm trying to look down, because I had listed, um, I think some other, um, success stories. Um, we've had several first-generation college students that have come in, their parents really have no direction and no way to, to help them, no navigate the application process, the scholarship process, um, and I've worked really closely with these students and helped them through that whole process. And, you know, I have students that I've helped that are at the U of A and M S S U, you know, multiple schools that we've gone through. Um, we, one thing that I'm really proud of also is I go into the, I started in the senior class because they were getting ready to graduate. But this past year I backed up to the junior class, and I went into all the junior class English, um, English classes and helped students create resumes. Um, they, they create, we went through what is a resume, and they created it and they emailed it to me, and I went through it with them to make suggestions and corrections, and so we went through the process, you know. For those that, for those that were interested, it was not for grades, so we did not get one hundred percent, you know, participation, but I think some of the students were really amazed when they would send in like four things, and then when I would call them in and say, hey, let's look at this, and they'd go, wow, that's my resume. Um, so that's something, because that, I mean, as you all know, that's, those are bones that you can build on and carry with you, you know, for the rest, for the rest of your life. So, um, let's see. I think anything else I think is just kind of covered in this, but are there any other questions that you guys have that? When I go into the classrooms, um, and starting from ninth grade, I come to every classroom, and we talk about, you know, think about which direction you want to go, because you should be choosing courses toward that as you're progressing through high school. Um, last year I think I caused, because Hawkins had a heart attack, because I went into, um, the, I think it was the freshman class, and this year was the first year that we were actually allowing tenth graders to sign up and take college classes. We real, ju- usually it's juniors and seniors, and I went in and did this presentation, and I'm like, you know, if you guys are planning to go to college, you need to be looking at concurrent credit, and I make sure I said for next year, because the time to sign up had passed. And before I even got back to my office, Ms. Hawkins comes in and she says, what did you say? And the kids were already emailing her wanting to take, you know, to take college classes. So getting the information to them, um, sooner, I think, is, is really critical. And I even met with the eighth graders last year as well to let them know you're moving to ninth grade and this is what to expect. So, um, I mean, I think that's about it. If you guys at some point in time just kind of look through this, if you have any other questions, email me, call me. Um, I appreciate the opportunity, I love working with our kids.
Can you, can you remind us who, who adminis- who funds the hired grant?
Okay, so the hired grant is partially funded through the Walton Family Foundation, um, and I think, I think you guys share the cost, like you do part, and the Walton Family, um, funds the other portion. That part I'm not one hundred percent sure about, to be honest, because, um, we have someone that supervises, that's like the director of the hired program, and they're really the ones that do more of the interaction with the grant process.
And do they currently place any like restrictions on career or college, whatever we do with that, or?
No, I mean, really honestly, they, they have very, the only input they really have is in the data we have to collect. Um, you know, we have to send in the, all of the different opportunities such as, oh, I didn't touch on job shadows, but all of the different, um, opportunities that we're giving kids from job shadows to speakers to trips and all those kinds of things, because they just really want to make sure that their funding is going towards something that actually is educating the, the students. Um, and the job shadowing program again, I mean, this year already, we've had over twenty-five students who have completed job shadows. Um, we've had, we've had three students, I believe, that have gone to O C H, and, um, they went in with an orthopedic surgeon into surgery and observed surgeries, he took them on his rounds with the patients. Um, we had, we've had students go to an architecture firm that I have a connection with, um, and like that person took the student into meetings, like planning meetings and all these things. So they're not just going in for most of the, I'm not gonna say that it's not that every time, but a lot of the times when these students are going, they're actually getting to actually participate, they're not just going and sitting and watching somebody do a job. They're planning for these students to come and they're developing activities so that they're really seeing the job. Thank you.
Yeah, we sincerely appreciate it. If you don't know Mrs. Smithers, she's been here for twenty years now, she's helped raise a generation of kids with her own boys and six or seven ladies that work in the office at the high school, they're in great synergy there and they really catch a lot of kids that you normally might not send out for these kind of opportunities, and it's been a really big success.
Well, I appreciate, again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, to you guys having the opportunity to work with the students, um, in this capacity, because I, I can really see a growth and a change in the students from having these opportunities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody sign in for comments? Uh, calendar review, board related, we have, uh, board breakfast, transportation department on, that would be next Wednesday. Then we have a regular board meeting on the last Monday, February twenty-fourth.
Basketball homecomings this week also.
Oh yeah, Friday, coming Friday. Unite is, I don't know, coming after that.
Tornation at six.
All right, consent agenda.
Emma, that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll let you, Mr. Grabett, take us through the next section, whatever order you want to go in.
Yeah, I would take a moment if there are questions on my report for the departments. Um, big one I'd like to point out there is we're still awaiting the school grade card. We anticipate that's this week, they said end of January. We did get our value-added growth scores at the end of last week, so we're working on comparison data there. And still raw data where the principals can't sort by teacher and grade yet, is that correct as of today, so?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So there's additional data coming, or we are?
So the value, it's a slow drip, the, the value-added growth is kind of a precursor to what our actual school status will be when we get the grades coming, and then there's been talk about holding the grades longer than usual, since we've had the same ones longer now. They're trying to get the data corrected to where first year of taking a test has found some inconsistencies, but we, not much has changed since you saw that, I believe in November is, we're still kind of setting on those scores. Now we know how our kids individually improved compared to the mean, but should have more on that next month. I'll send it out, I'm sure there, we'll probably get it a day, half a day before the public, and then it'll be a big topic in the news and newspapers the next day, so keep checking on that. We have several guests tonight, if there, there are no questions from that section. I'm gonna first invite up, uh, Ms. Andrews, and she has guests with us, Jerry Bond, and she's gonna talk about a one-time professional learning grant that we're applying for with the state.
Yes, so I also included the commissioners memo on your table so that you have that if you need some additional reading. Um, the reason that we are getting these funds is the state originally had a professional learning contract with an organization, and that contract is no longer in place, and so they are distributing those funds to districts, and the gravity allocation is seventy thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars. Um, at this time, this is a one-time allocation, although there has been talk that this may be funds that we get again next year. Um, it must be spent in core areas of foundational literacy, um, related to the science of reading, strengthening quality instruction, strengthening career pathways, and or multi-tiered systems of support for behavior and mental health. Um, we, after looking at data and collaborating with some of our building principals, um, Mr. Grabett, feel like that spending that in the areas of strengthening quality instruction is where we're going to get the most value for that money. And we want to have the biggest impact that we can on the most amount of students, and so we're thinking that we feel that that will be where we need to allocate those funds, um, with some of the goals of kind of trying to review our current systems and programs that we have in place and making sure we have high-quality and effective instruction in every single classroom. And so the state gave us a list of vendors that we could choose from in each of those categories, the vendors, um, my understanding is the vendors submitted bids and information, and then the state approved those vendors of who could be in each category. Um, and so the vendor that we are hoping to work with is the Bailey Education Group. Um, we are currently working with them on another grant called the Community of Practices Grant, um, that we had sixteen visits, and we chose to allocate those sixteen visits or coaching sessions at the K-five level, and so we've recently started those visits, and I can bring up, actually, Mr. Jerry Bond was here with us today on one of those visits, and we were kind of joking, like, hey, why are you here? We have a school board meeting, why don't you come join us? And he's like, okay, I will. So I was like, great, so he can, he can share a little bit more about the Bailey Group, um, but what we would get from that is the ability to expand those coaching sessions to the K-twelve level, and we would actually get forty-six visits, um, where they're going to come in and help us look at our systems, do we have the right systems in place so that our teachers can be effective in the classroom, and then also working on some individual coaching possibly, uh, in different areas wherever the data leads us, that we have those needs. So I'll let him share a little bit about the Bailey Group and overview of kind of the work that.
Well, the Bailey Group is one of the recognized groups that the State Department has approved, and, um, so I'm gonna tell you, this is not a planned presentation, so if you're looking for a sales pitch or a dog and pony show, we'll have to plan that for the other people.
That's what the state's for, we're good.
So, uh, I'll, I'll just tell you, the Bailey Group is a, is a group that has consultants, uh, working in a number of states, but here in the state of Arkansas, uh, we have a state director, and we also, in the Northwest Arkansas Co-op, have a project manager. They look at, at bringing in people like myself, who's retired administrator, uh, with experience and, uh, working with instructional support and leadership. Our focus is on systems, but if that assessment should, uh, identify some areas of need such as E L A or M A, which is the focus of the community's the practice grant, then we have literacy specialists and math specialists who come in and do the content support. So that's kind of a, a quick overview. The professional learning grant, uh, that Ms. Andrews just referenced, um, I may not be working with, because that's a, a different grant, and it may involve some other people who have more days to commit to the work, uh, but we have people all over the state uh, who have been contracted by the Bailey Group, uh, to provide support. Do you have any questions? That was a really brief overview, but Dr. Piper told me not to do a presentation, just to answer any questions. Um, she said, if y'all want a presentation, she'll do it.
Let me say you're focused, focused on systems, like what do you, like what kind of systems?
Well, um, without getting too lengthy, for the sake of your time, uh, the systems that make up the entire district, uh, and then there's a whole number of them, my focus is on teaching and learning. So any system that has a direct impact on teaching and learning, uh, we assess and determine how we can enhance that system so that it can hopefully result in higher achievement scores. Uh, give you an example is the guiding coalitions that are established on your campuses here in your district already, uh, the professional learning committees that are formed to where teachers have a system in place to where they can come together and efficiently use the resource that is most critical, and that is time, and be able to work on the areas that have been identified as in need of improving, but also identify those areas, uh, that have been successful, just as the report you just heard, uh, from your workforce director, uh, celebrating those areas that are doing well. And so tha- that's an example of a system, but probably one that, that relates to, uh, what Mr. Grabett just referenced is analyzing data and allowing the data to drive the decision-making that's taking place for the guiding coalition. They used to call them leadership teams back when I was a principal, now they call them guiding coalitions, so whatever term you relate to, um, that group gets more hands-on with the data. The instructional leaders on each campus are encouraged to be an integral part of that process, not, not a, not a, someone that, that watches from the sidelines, but instead gets in the game, uh, with working on the data and determining what needs to be done. The other system obviously is the human capital, working with the classroom teachers who are delivering, delivering that instruction, and in many cases, that's where the rubber meets the road, and that's where a lot of investment and focus, uh, needs to be placed. And I could go on and on, but, uh, you were just wanting to connect with the term system related to.
Yep, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you staying and being here.
Thank you.
I didn't know I was gonna get Mexican food, that was a bonus.
Thank you.
My wife had vegetable soup, so. Thank y'all.
So one of our goals with this is to really come out, um, collaborate, have outside eyes come in and give us some input and give us some feedback and, um, strengthen our building improvement plans and give us some goals as a district to, to really move forward and, and guide us in the group improvement plan, so.
Thank you.
Feedback or questions or concerns? I hope to give another update, um, as we get going with this, I hope to another update probably in March.
Yeah, I do have a brief question. So how do we, um, prove accountability for this or any program, especially, I know what, I'm assuming this is the dissolve, is it, where we dissolve solution tree at the state level is where this?
That's where that's coming from.
Has come from, and I just want to make that clear to our community, because I know that there was a lot of talk in the community about that. So what, um, so are we looking at s- scores, academic scores, how do we see whether this is, um, being helpful?
I think definitely academic scores.
Right.
Um, I think it will take some time to see the results in academic scores, um, as far as like our state testing, but, but definitely academic scores, but I think also looking at, like when we're developing our building improvement plans and having things on there that are actionable items and making sure that we're accountable for getting those done and improving our systems and making, honestly, making what our teachers do in the classroom, making that easier for them to have that effective instruction, if that makes sense. So, so definitely the score, that, that's the main telltale thing that we want to improve and what we're really focusing on.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I have an understanding and others do too, as to what this is.
All right, thank you.
And if I was to figure you correctly, you would have personnel come in periodically to make sure everything's doing okay, especially if it starts to go.
That was our conversation with choosing the Bailey Group in particular was more onsite, in-person as opposed to virtual. There would be a virtual component here, but with so many new staff members, as many helpful hands as we can get around them and try to help build morale with the younger ones coming in the district too, that they feel that kind of support. So all of our administrators are doing that, we're, we're trying at every level. That's a thing in education today, is trying to keep people in the career for those first three, four, or five years. We feel like this is the type of program that can benefit that.
A lot of the other programs that we looked at, I was specifically looking at some that were tailored to new teachers, the coaching was virtual. And we didn't feel like that really gave our teachers the hands-on support that they were, that they needed. And feel like this would be the better, better fit for that and for our administrators too to have some be there with them too.
And I just want to comment, looking at the four areas, I think all four are important, but the quality of instruction and how we deliver, I can see that being a number one priority. So I think that was a wise decision.
Like, how does this, will this play out with like the curriculum we choose or will kind of evaluate it or?
Yes, so the curriculums that we already have in place, it will review and evaluate those, are they being implemented effectively? Are there tweaks that we need to make? They have experts that can come in and, and look at, for example, benchmark education that we're using in K-five literacy. Is that working well? We're looking at a math adoption, you know, putting things in place and making sure we have the right systems in place as we go through that adoption process also.
Great.
Thank you.
Our district goal in the packet this month is the personalization reports, you can see our percentages from each building. I appreciate all the teachers that are making those contacts, trying to build relationships with parents across the community, making sure that everybody knows their teacher, know who the people are that are around your children all day long. Questions, comments there? I'll go to board training hours. See your hours in there. Gives me another opportunity to come up and have a celebration for Mr. Mormon.
Woo!
He made fifty hours more training, which. Anybody going for a hundred?
Over a jiver.
That's me, I can tell myself.
Um, see enrollment attendance reports and that, you know, where we were two weeks ago was in the facilities work session the other day, so, so we continue to monitor seven, eight, nine, ten that are all above a hundred and eighty students, which are record numbers for us and we look at facilities options going forward, we continue to track where we are on enrollment. We have stayed somewhat steady this year, we're actually down twelve or fifteen kids in September, so we'll see what the spring semester holds with movement into the district. We still see pretty high percentage in our favor of transfers in versus transfers out.
You said we're down fifteen?
Yeah, we're around twenty, ninety, Labor Day weekend coming back, we do a ten-day drop at the start of the year, so as we got the students that actually showed this year move out and leaving the district for other reasons. We have not grown anymore from the beginning of the year, which probably is beneficial at the high school especially that we've still been able to place students with a schedule. There was a moment there with ninth graders, we were concerned about where they would go. We had new students, what kind of schedule could we give to them?
So these are, sorry, these are actual kids that we had officially withdrawn or changed districts. The ones, if you say we're down fifteen, those are the only ones that like we know that they have officially transferred or like home schooled.
Miss Mitchell, virtual, homeschool, physically moved, I mean that's. It's more than that because they've been replaced by new students coming in, so our plus-minuses probably more like in the hundred to a hundred and twenty range of kids that have moved out that have been replaced by new students. Aggregate, we're down about ten or fifteens since September. There was a time in September where we were really concerned, remember, we had to look at capacity for being able to honor some of these transfers, so we're still a little bit under there. Which brings us to school choice transfer and the new application process. There's model policy update came out in January one, we, we got the law on, it's a letter and ways that we have to honor school choice within fifteen days now. So within naturally not having a board meeting every thirty days, we may have to come up with a process there. It may just be me signing, acknowledging, holding, and then board approval, but on some of those space areas, if we do bump up on the cap of what that grade can handle, we're going to have to come up with a way to work through that. I think all districts are experiencing this in January, so we'll come to a solution here and have, have that for the board.
At one point, we voted to allow the superintendent to accept or reject us based on capacity, is that true? Is it?
And that, that could still hold, but we would still put it in the, the next available board package. Not sure the exact nature of this, if it, if it had been challenged in some capacity before, it had not for us. My, my concern would be when we are nearing capacity in a grade, which we very well could be in those four grades for the next few years and how we would.
Isn't there a provisional process?
Yes.
So wouldn't, I mean, if, if we had a grade that was close, it would be a provisional?
Right, but they're wanting in then, and they're wanting action taken within that fifteen days.
Yeah. So how do we work that now? If, uh, we approve it at the next board meeting?
Yeah, and then we typically Megan or I would reach out to the family the next morning, let them know, you know, probabilities depending upon the grade it is. They'd be willing to start. It's only been a challenge with like the parents' call, you know, the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday after we just had a board meeting and we're not going to have another one for four weeks or twice now. It was five weeks with the Mondays being off, so.
So the way I read this though, it's from, I mean, you got from January to May first, right?
They have to be acknowledged in that time period though, with the fifteen days.
Well, I mean, they can be acknowledged, but they don't have, I mean, what's the I mean, is they're applying for the next year?
This is a school choice, not the board-to-board like whatever.
Probably school choice.
Both.
Look, I mean, here's the thing, if you're going from January to May, and it's school choice, you, they, they don't have to come this year, see, you just say, hey, thanks for applying, we're going to look at it. It's as simple as that.
The policy now lets kids have the option and then choose to start tomorrow if they want to, or they can wait till the next school year.
So the state then needs to refrain from saying the period is from January first to May first. I mean, basically, it's a free-for-all and just, there is, there are no dates. So I mean, and I want clarification on that because that right there is not right.
I think there's a couple, I think there's a couple scenarios based on what I was reading, there is a request for immediate, I, I can't remember the terminology, or you're requesting for next school year. So, and that's where I think the provisional comes into account because if you're requesting for that, we can give a provisional approval based on where you are in line, based on our capacity at the time. I think.
So these transfers that were in our packet tonight.
Yes.
Three kids, they're going, they want to start as soon as we approve this?
Yes.
Basically?
Yes.
And that's different from the school choice.
Right, that, that used to be, well, it used to be, there was the May.
The school choice was the only way you could do it.
Right, and there was the May one deadline to get in for next school year.
They got extended every year to July.
And now they're saying there's this option to school choice in the January one window, so. Yeah, we, we will have to be very clear on how we respond to these in that time. I like what Mr. Harris is saying there, we have a provisional letter, but a hold date until we can prove capacity because our capacity is changing all the time and that's where we probably need clarification from the Department of Ed on what that would be. I read it and the, the other districts I've spoke to on this, we read it as we're going to be held to that fifteen-day period now. Now, is that everybody going to exercise that provision? But I, I have concerns, especially the grades we just talked about, seven, eight, nine, ten that are in the one-eighties now and we're getting close to being full in those classes and it's the core classes, it's English, math, science, and social studies where we only have so many sections of it.
So, okay, so this might be a stupid question, but this, this process, this January first to May first, this is for, it doesn't require board-to-board. If you do it any other time, it requires board-to-board.
Right, and that's.
Doing it here is getting you in line for next semester. Otherwise, you have to go after a board-to-board transfer, so this is, these are separate, this is a separate conversation. So these a hundred percent, we have to have the option of that provisional.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is.
Because we haven't, we haven't approved these until like
Yeah.
All of them in January.
But basically what you said, the school choice, they can start tomorrow.
They can.
Okay, so, no, they can't, because if they fill this out, if they fill this out.
It's not for the.
It's, it's not the same. I mean, they need to make sure everything's apples to apples and not apples to oranges. Because if they fill this paper out, I don't care who it is, they come up here and ask for a school choice transfer application. It says right here, January one, May one, next year. Now, they've got to go a different route, whatever it is, this document, I mean, it says right there.
Yeah, I don't know what the terminology is for this.
Good argument. So it's a good argument.
I'm just saying, I mean, if.
It's very ambiguous, what, what do you mean?
If there's different rules for school choice than the Department of Ed, they don't need to be sending this out to us. I'm just.
That was going to be my question was what instructions, because on here, it, it just strictly says school choice, January ends May first and it doesn't talk anything about fifteen days, so was there a separate?
Yeah, it's coming in the policy updates, so you've got all those policy updates tonight, so that one is in there.
Oh, it's in there, okay.
That's where that language is coming.
Okay. I can see where Tracy's staying on this particular application.
I'm just saying, because you got different forms to fill out. Somebody's going to come up here to fill out the wrong form and then they're going to be raising all kinds of cane because guess what? They filled out the wrong paperwork because there was a miscommunication or whatever and my kid wants to start school here tomorrow.
We'll do the best we can counseling everybody coming in and we, we always say the caveat of space and board approval.
So, and this, this document we're given, this, this is the one we have to use, right? Like, it's just, it is what it is. Unless there's some things in there that I find very strange, I don't know why I would be asking for things like race and things like that in a transfer document.
Well, it's a little about second base.
Yeah, there were Southwestern, Southern districts that had.
But that's, but your district is in, that, that means you can't transfer out of your district, I'm just saying. It doesn't really matter, but like I said, we have to say no to somebody because it's a capacity issue, why don't we ask that question?
Agreed.
So if someone comes in, signs up for the school choice, says, okay, but I'm going to start next year. We say, okay, pending what we have room for. But, and before that happens, somebody comes in and does a board-to-board, it's, it's two separate things, right?
Right.
Do they cut in?
Depending on the time period.
Can they cut in before that person? Well, then just be it.
Technically, yeah.
Okay, well then.
Or the kid who moved into Grabett in July and we have to have space for now. So where are we allowed to keep a buffer to have students that are naturally moving into the district? And that, that's my concern is we're talking about expansion at the high school and in Captain, the two upper grades in the middle school. We can't predict. We, we, we could never have predicted how many ninth graders we were going to have this year compared to the number eighth graders last year because of the amount of people moving into the district physically and then choice plus board-to-board, so.
So are these states just to be.
Basically, every time someone fills out the school choice, we're going to give them the refusal letter more than likely and say, okay.
Provisionally.
Right, and but.
We should honor.
We'll put you on the waitlist.
In the summer, yeah, we should, and we could determine that. Officer is aboard of what, what date should we allow them, because they need to know where their children are going to be for next year.
But yeah, so if you put in January one and you were number one on the list and then in March, somebody says, I want to do a board-to-board transfer, you might have lost your spot. Yeah.
Now you're number twelve.
Well, no.
Maybe.
You just went from having a spot to.
Not having a spot.
Alright, buddy.
I'm still a bit confused at the difference between January first and May first, like, was it that? I know that has something to do with eligibility and things like that, I guess.
I believe so. We're hoping that in this legislative session, some of the things within transfers gets cleaned up because it's a lot of unintended causes around athletics right now are happening in the state, more so in central Arkansas than here. We do live in a spot where we're somewhat four-to-one in versus out with our larger neighbor district, which has a high school very close to our district that's thirty-two hundred students now. And I can see this continuing to be an issue, even if we build all the space we want with how quickly that area is growing, our side of the district now growing, that we're going to have to come up with our own language that is within this policy, but also is fair to kids physically moving into Grabett and kids trying to move in, especially at those upper grades right now.
The way I was reading, I mean, the new policies, we have to have a ratio, we have a, a basically agreed-to student-teacher ratio that we stick to. It used to be like if you get within ninety percent, now it's just the ratio. I think that's a change that they made. And then it really doesn't matter, like kid asks for transfer, it's within our ratio, they're not expelled right now, they're in.
See, our, our, Miss Mitchell, our ratio is probably artificially lower than it actually is in those, let's say like English nine and ten versus honors and AP, which those classes may be smaller in the upper grades, so we have to put a number like that, like we think about how many sections of English nine do we have, how many sections of algebra do we have? Because that really tells us when we're full.
I think we have to have that.
Yep.
Per grade.
Yes.
And that number is not, it's not, um, debatable is not the right word, but it, it's just a number.
Yep.
And that, you know, that can change, that number can change, I think, based on enrollment or what, you know, especially in high school, probably based on where kids are. But like you have to have that number, that way when the kids are applying, it's pinging against that. And I also noticed, you know, ask the question, when we take a transfer, because they have to select the box, you know, you're currently suspended, expelled, all those things, do we verify that? Or I assume there's a way for us to see if a kid is expelled.
And we have to get transfer records from.
Registars would know that information when they request records or transfers.
And then my next question, because I think in the policy it says unless they're in an active, actively expelled, we have to take them. That's how the policy reads. And I, I don't know how much flexibility we have, but I think it's worth at, at least a conversation of I, I don't know how you determine between active, but like if a kid is just coming off an expulsion as well. And maybe it's his affair, maybe he's not even the right comment, but we got three kids wanting in, one kid hasn't been expelled for a weapon or something. And maybe it's his affair, maybe he's not even the right comment, but we got three kids wanting in, one kid hasn't been expelled for a weapon or something. And another kid just wants to come to school here, because the kid that was expelled was first on the list, we gotta let them in. Other than, you know, like, I don't know, I feel like we should have some autonomy there, based on disciplinary history. Will we let them in or not?
I agree, but you ain't gonna win that one.
I know, but I do, I think, I, I guess I should say, I think it's worth at least debate and dialogue. Don't even know if I truly believe that or not, but I think it's, uh, it's, it's.
As this goes into practice, we could definitely get a legal opinion on it too, because for us. We are potentially one of the more unique situations in the state right now with having. This unprecedented growth in our upper grades of regional transfers coming in, and then having somewhat. Historical elementary grades that. We may need to do something a little bit different on here to kind of put a timeline in place that protects us from. Going over by two or three when we were locked into it, and now we're seventy thousand dollars into a new teacher that. We don't have a classroom for, and we would not have had to hire without. The previous spring and summer of, of choice versus board to board. Cause, cause we're also gonna naturally grow, and that natural growth. We see as people move in and out, and the housing starts we have, and I have a. Bella Vista apartment complex, you can see, starting to go up, um, kinda at the corner there. Just down the road from, kinda equidistant between Casey's and the new police station. We're pretty close to where the Bella Vista Arts and Crafts Fair is. It's on the, like, north side of that lot, so we're gonna see a lot of kids from that, and that may open right in the middle of next school year. Like, it, they, they say December twenty-five, now there, three of those buildings are up. Um, but we don't know how many children are gonna move into that immediately, and we've never had that kind of development all within a school year, so.
So we gotta, we gotta have three readings of this policy, basically.
Yes.
So are we saying this is not a, this is not a policy right now, nor are we. Are we required by law to respond within that fifteen days right now?
I believe we would be, but this got kicked out late, so. Safe to say we need more. Well, I mean, even if you're Benville, I mean, you're still space captains at schools and having to bus kids around.
I think we need to get really, really educated on this provisional process, and use it to its fullest extent, where we see fit, like, just. Cause this thing's getting messy.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could take a lot of kindergarteners right now, but we wouldn't take too many more ninth or tenth graders.
Oh, you're saying, we're, we'll have to have a provisional and then have a date where we say July whatever, you know, like, whatever.
Yeah, and then July, July thirty-one, August one, like, something, because we've hired for the year.
Just says August will be July one. So.
Oh, they moved it.
I don't know if the provisional would hold past that, though. That's, there's a lot of language there. But we'll definitely keep this on the agenda going forward, because it's a, it's a big concern, um, where we are space wise now.
Is there a similar type of deadline? Cause this deadline has to do with eligibility, right? Cause that's the only other reason. Or is it for registering? Is there another deadline for like, in the fall, higher?
So school choice is May first, so if a kid is in school choice before May first and they're eligible.
For the whole year?
Then that would have to be, uh, either the board to board by July first deadline or change to August. That's us, that's how the rules are currently written. Um, I have been told that the legislature is about to potentially put in a new law into effect that will basically shut down the general portal. For her ten to eleven to twelve grade.
That'd be fantastic. It's, the numbers I've heard coming out of Central Arkansas are wild.
People are basically announcing where they're going to.
And they'll play one sport.
Continue their education.
In the fall, and then play a different sport.
Or they'll announce, I'm looking for a home.
Mr. Plant, with Dennis's report, would you also like the chance to hear from Scott Beersley at the end of that before?
Yes.
Maybe some Q and A before those motions later in the evening?
Okay, reviewing the results for period six, we're halfway through the fiscal year. December twenty twenty-four. Uh, property taxes for the month, close to seven hundred and sixty-three thousand. You can see that we, uh, received our student growth money, which is surprisingly close to the original estimate I made. If the state wanted me to re, uh, revise that, uh, we did not expect an ESA match grant. Uh, first week of July, when federal allocations came out, but we are getting one, ten thousand three hundred eighty-two dollars. Uh, there's the Raspberry Pi grant, uh, the Miss Metro, the guru behind that. And then preschool development grant, uh, three thousand dollars, uh, that's from Dr. Newsom. Total revenues for the month, close to one point five eight seven million, close to twelve and a half million for the year. Questions on revenues?
Any explanation as to why we got the ESA match grant? Wasn't a fat finger of it?
Not sure. I think they were unsure what the money pocket looked like at the state at that point. Okay, looking at expenditures, spent two point two one eight million for the month, twelve, almost twelve point four million year to date. Uh, you can see the operating fund currently a little over budget and the building fund, but if you look at the prior, your numbers were one percent better at this time than last year. So we're slowly making improvement. As you know, a lot of our building fund expenditures are front loaded, and that moderates as, as the year goes on. Uh, pretty healthy cash position at the end of December, almost five point six million. Uh, it tells you guys, our property taxes are the lowest in February. I've run my cash projection. It's pretty tight. I'm not worried about February at all. I'll keep an eye on March. I think we may be good at this time for March. We can get our pullback monies in April and May, so instead of being cautious, I'm cautiously optimistic. Looking at operating costs, center, same story. Uh, I had athletic highlighted on there, they barely made it into that category. I think they're doing pretty well. But if you look at the over percentage, uh, budget versus prior year, you see a lot of improvement there. For instance, custodial maintenance grant was at fifty-nine percent of budget last year, now it's at fifty-one percent. Um, transportation sixty-one percent versus sixty, tech sixty-five percent versus fifty-nine, so it's improving. Uh, I think last month, we looked at how low electricity was, lo and behold. Uh, yeah, Empire Electric, behind buildings, of about thirty thousand. I should have no change on the overall budget, but I went ahead and said, okay. Let's say we paid that in the center, what would have put our, our electric bill at? Year to date, it would be forty-seven percent versus the prior year, sixty-three percent. There's probably some timing on that. We've had a couple of weeks of super cold weather, but. To look at a little, little mild going forward, I hope that stays. So, uh, pretty encouraged, at least halfway through the year, so.
I have a motion to approve the financial report for you from Scott.
Still moved.
Second.
How was it fair to say that? Any thoughts? Thanks, Dennis.
Good evening. This is Scott Beersley, I'm of course, security Beersley, I'm just gonna update you on three things pretty quickly unless you have questions. In your green folders, there is a proposed budget for twenty-six, twenty-seven. And you may, you're asking yourself, why are we talking about this now? So as a reminder, the Arkansas constitution requires the school board to present the millage every year, regardless of if there's a check. So for this year, your election will be in May of twenty twenty-five. The millage approved in May of twenty twenty-five goes in effect January one of twenty twenty-six. Is, goes out on the March of twenty-six tax bills, is due by October of twenty-six. So for you, that's the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So that's why those dates are like that. As a reminder, if you lose the election on your millage, you revert to the previously approved millage. So you're having an election for no reason, because the outcome doesn't matter, but you're required to do it by law. And so we're just following the process. Uh, you also are required to publish the proposed budget once in your local newspaper. Because underneath the proposed budget is your millage, which is what you're required to present. So that's there for your approval later in the evening. Any questions about proposed budget? It is a no change on your millage, you're just doing your statutory requirement. Second thing that's in your packets is our three-year agreement. It's, uh, time to renew that. All the fees and services are identical to the previous, um, contract, and have been employed for about ten or fifteen years. Um, you don't owe our firm anything unless you borrow money, everything's contingent on a successful bond issue. But by being under contract, it allows us to be your dissemination agent, to no charge and file with EMA, which is the Electronic Municipal Market Association. Where you're required to post your audits and your unaudited numbers and certain other financial events, and so we take care of that. And email Dennis a electronic receipt every time we file on your behalf, and that'll be later in your, um, action for approval. Any questions about that? All right, last thing that, um, Mr. Grabit wanted you just to have to put in the back of your mind as you're talking about facilities. And I'm gonna give you just some numbers you can kind of jot down as you're thinking about the future. Right now, where interest rates are, basically, um, for every million dollars that you borrow, the annual cost is sixty-five thousand dollars. So if the board decided that it wanted to borrow four million dollars for a construction project. The payment would be approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year, just as you're having those discussions. And if you turn and ask Dennis, hey, is that something that you think we can work into the budget without a millage increase? That's the number he would be looking at working into the budget. School districts have the authority to issue what's called a second lien bond, which the district has done before. And how that differs from an election bond is if the revenue that your debt mills are producing. Are sufficient to make a new debt payment, you're allowed as a board to, um, borrow additional money. Without a millage increase and without going to the voters. And so the process is the school board decides, we wanna borrow, and I'm just gonna use four million dollars. In this example, and then you have to publish once in the local newspaper, the fact that you're going to do this. And you have to wait fourteen days for anybody to go down to the county and post their comment. Um, I don't think the school should do that, or I wish they were borrowing more, or whatever their comments are. And I don't think in the last seven years, I've had anybody post a comment that they have the legal right to do that. And then you notify the State Board of Education, and it goes through their regular sixty-day process, and it's on the consent agenda. As long as we filled out the paperwork correctly, they're not evaluating the merits or the affordability. They're just saying, you've given us notice you're gonna borrow money, and then they approve it, and you're able to then, uh, take bids and borrow the money without state approval. And so the district has the ability to borrow four million dollars without going back to the voters. So I'm gonna pause there before we talk about elections. Does everybody kind of understand how the payments work and the process?
You're using four million as an example, or that's the limit on the second lien?
I'm just using that as an example, because I think you looked at something between three and four million. If you looked at three million, same answer, it's just sixty-five thousand times three. Instead of times four. Any other questions about that part of it?
That, from our work session the other day, that was Eliza Jones' number with Richard, Ms. Mitchell. We're talking about current capacity and what it would take to make that, um, storm safe rating that the architects mentioned. We wanted that number, um, when we were talking Fridays. Is that correct, Tracy? Kind of where that ended, when we came over from the high school.
So the other sort of just thing to put in the back of your minds is, if you were to go to the voters and ask for a millage in the future. You know, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, whenever you were looking at it, where your assessment is right now. In general terms, each mill that you request of Grabit voters gives you six and a half million dollars you can spend on a project. So if you said we need sixty-five million, it would be ten mills. If you said we needed thirteen million, it would be two new mills, just however that, that works out. Um, so, um, there are some advantages as you get into a little bit bigger numbers, that the millage comes down a little bit. Cause the cost of issuance and things don't go up, but at this point, as you're just thinking about how much do we need? You know, twenty-six million dollars would be four new mills, just six and a half million for each mill that you request from the voters. And that, that's just for planning purposes at this point. Last thing I'll remind you about elections is that, um, you're allowed to go to the voters once per calendar year. Your current election is in May of each year. It's in May every year, except for presidential elections, when it switches to March. And you have to give the voters basically, um, you know, forewarning of that. And that's why for your January meeting, you're taking care of the May election, so it's about a, a three-month warning to the voters if you're asking for something. The other thing that comes up occasionally is, can we do like the city and give a laundry list of projects to the voters? And they can say, yes, we want the playground, no, we don't want the indoor practice facility, and have a price tag attached to each one. Like cities can do, and the answer is no. Schools are organized under a different constitutional amendment than cities and counties. And your authorizing legislation says that it's the board that has to make the decision. And you can put anything you want into that, but you vote on how much millage and what you want to say you're gonna spend the money on. And that one question has a yes, no answer, and you can ask it once per calendar year. Chris, you look like you're stealing on a good question there.
Well, I'm not. If you changed the question, technically, you could go back for, you could start with sixty-five million and say, okay, well, they. Did not enjoy that. You could go back and say, okay, it's reduced, because it's a different question.
Yeah, so every year, the question can change, and it is, uh, I'd say, I don't know, fifty-fifty, I'm kind of going out all in there. When a school is defeated for multiple projects with, say, three to five mills, there's almost always the discussion afterwards of, we lost. So what did you hear at the grocery store, the ballgame, where people liked, you know, the millage was too much, or we liked everything but this? And so, maybe less than half the time, boards will reduce the millage in the project, because it increases their chance. But I would say, majority plus of the time, the board will say, we needed all those things. Um, we were, you know, we need to go find more yes votes, and they go back the same the second time. Now, if you get beat twice in a row, then.
We get taken over?
Change of like, okay, two strikes, you know, we don't wanna get beat up a third time, let, let's change it, or let's don't go back and take a couple of years off. But schools on average pass about sixty-five percent of their millage requests. So, uh, it, it varies a little bit when you get over three to four mills, the percentage drops a little bit. But it's about sixty-five percent on average, millage requests are approved. Anything I didn't cover that you wanted?
That was perfect. You were driving up here today as we were going back and forth on some of these numbers. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott.
I'm gonna leave this for Dennis for signatures later, just as a reminder, um, the budget will appear once in the paper, because that's, that's the requirement.
And you publish on our behalf?
I do whatever Dennis says. If Dennis says take care of it, I email it to the paper. If he says he does, then I trust him.
Yeah, uh, is this, um, motion to approve this budget on our meeting tonight? Are we doing that?
It should be on it.
Yeah.
It usually is.
It's election appro, it's F on. Item on nine, so it says election approval, but that, that election approval is the budget. It's, it's both, it's all on the same one.
But that motion will have to read word for word.
Yeah.
About that motion.
Yeah, I want to, to...
Provide that.
Yeah. Do we need to add one?
I think we do.
That's not on there, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see it.
Let's add it before we go to the executive session. Can someone make a motion to add that, Kyle?
I move that we add, the motion should read, "To adopt the attached proposed budget of expenditures with tax levy for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2026, to and including June 30, 2027, and to prove the related sample valid as submitted."
All right, all we're doing is adding that to the agenda.
Yeah, that's all.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor are adding that it'll be item G. Those in favor say a.
Aye.
Any opposeds? All right, we are going to, going to executive session to talk about hiring.
Board members met in executive session for the purpose of discussing the following items per cent to Arkansas Freedom of Information Act ninety-three as amended, hiring. Action items. Personnel.
Move that we hire GUE Special Education teacher Laney Bunch. Ms. Bunch will be employed on a one hundred and ninety day contract and will start on step one for an annual rate of fifty thousand.
Second.
Question and second. Any discussion? Aloud in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If she passes.
I move we hire GUE Special Education aide Bridget Smith. Ms. Smith will be employed on a hundred and eighty-one day contract and will start on step two for an annual rate of twenty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Second.
Question and second. Any discussion? Aloud in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move we approve the retirement of Lisa Eves effective at the end of the twenty-four twenty-five school year.
Second.
Question and second. Any discussion? How long was she here? Do you know?
Four years.
Three.
Yeah, five or six.
Ms. Griffin.
Pass to remind you.
Thank you. Six years. Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move we approve the GUE Intro District Transfer Mary Martin from her current assignment of Gravette Upper Elementary Third Grade Special Education Teacher to her new assignment of Gravette Upper Elementary Self-contained Special Education Teacher. Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move we approve the resignation of Kim Sutherland as a Gravette Bus Driver effective January the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move we approve the GHS Deca Overnight Travel Trip.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
I move we approve the GHS Arkansas State Bestien Festival Overnight Trip.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to approve the removal of five zone members to at-large member congress on configuration. Configuration to an at-large member configuration effective after the May twenty-twenty-five election.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? Just to be clear, this will take our four-member positions from zone zoning requirements to seven at-large positions. Effective after this next election. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
I move after the evaluation of Mr. Gravette that we offer him a full-time contract as superintendent with terms to be determined.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion?
Our intention is to obviously retain Mr. Gravette. We think he's done a great job. We did an evaluation of Mr. Gravette and we, like the motion said, the board has come to an agreement that we would like to continue that. We would like to say that, you know, we were in a position where we needed superintendent Mr. Gravette to bail us out, but I think the timing was just perfect, to be honest with you. So it wasn't a bailout. It was just, you definitely have helped us a lot. So we've enjoyed having you here and look forward to continuing that in the future. We will kind of firm up these details in the next meeting so that will become more clear for Dennis and everybody in the future.
So we can remove that intro.
The full time.
Can I change my email? We haven't voted yet.
There's just a motion.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I move that we employ First Security Bertzley as financial advisor for a period of three years effective as of the date of adoption. Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion?
I'm just going to ask this question to Dennis and I don't, maybe it's not a fair question, but like the rates that we're agreeing to, which is gay.
Two outfits in the state. There's Bear's lawyer, there's Stevens, and their pay schedules are almost identical.
And governance in place at the state level, right, for them to even be allowed to offer their services to schools, so. Essentially, like for this, we're, if we borrow money, it's trade their fees and they'd manage all the process and what.
Well, just like every year, he makes that statement for the election that has to be.
Yeah, they provide critical oversight, making sure that we're compliant operationally for a lot of things.
Any more discussion?
They're incredibly valuable as we get into projects with consulting and regulation meetings. It's like we could, Dennis and I could not do all of that or that would be all we did. It's a very valuable contract for us to have.
And there's no negotiating because I brought that up one time.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to review the January ninth ASPA model policies as a first reading. Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion?
I think it's adding after this. I did have just a number of questions, but for us, I mean, there's a few things in here that are new, you know, specifically around AI.
Yeah, Michelle and I spoke on that one today and getting a committee together and, yeah, I was, I mean, we need to, we are doing it.
Kids are using it, teachers are using it.
Yes, yes, indeed.
So just, this states that we have to put a committee together to come up with approved AI tools that teachers and students, I like this thing. Maybe at a high level. I do think it's going to be an interesting time to embrace because you can either embrace this thing or put your head in a hole. You know, kids are going to use it regardless. We might as well teach them to be constructive and it's being used in the workforce every day. Like our kids are going to be much more well-positioned if they know how to use it to their benefit. That would be interesting.
Yes, I'm reading through all of those. That was the one I stopped on and pondered the most. We have done some trainings and have some organizations we already have relationships with that we're just at the start.
And the other one's just around all the school choice stuff. I think we beat that dead horse earlier, but we have some work to do there as well.
Oh, there's still some whooping left.
I agree.
Any more discussion? Any opposed?
I move that we adopt the attached proposed budget of expenditures with tax levy for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-twenty-six, two and including June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, and to approve the related sample ballot as presented.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Anybody board comments, anything?
I just want to say this presented from Glenn Duffy students is just the neatest thing. It is, if I was on the school board, I would, and her children have drawn pictures and told us what they would do. And it's so fun to read through those, so I can't wait to go home. So thank you to Glenn Duffy students.
Are they, are they always different a little bit?
They are different, yes.
For the record, Waylon Welborn would like all teachers to get more money. So what Waylon Welborn's teacher is. He needs to know he's got a class.
I would say there's one in there that says that they want the principal to be fired and Mr. Rutledge.
From Kinsley Woods. If she were a school board member, she would make a gymnastics team. So just keep that in, that in your mind right there.
She actually is Mrs. Fire's class.
That's a double one out there.
Precious, thank you.
I don't want to do, everyone should have snakes, so.
You never know what they're gonna say.
This is true. That's the best thing about it.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.